All right, well, let me just first welcome everyone to the May 18th meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted to have everyone with us. Ms. Mester, please go ahead and read the notice that you need to read.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for Monday, May 18th, 2020 at 7:30 PM. The meeting for which this agenda has been posted will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operations during COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of City Council will be present at this meeting through electronic means, and all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting at the website, which is listed on the post agenda, fallschurchva.gov/councilmeetings, as well as on FCC TV for Cox Channel 11, RCN2, and Verizon 35. Council work sessions are conducted to allow council members to discuss upcoming legislation and policy issues. The public is generally not invited to speak. Public comment may be sent to City Clerk at Falls Church VA. All comments are provided in full to the members of City Council and will be summarized at the next regular council meeting. And Mayor, as you know, this evening, unusual for a work session, but we do have several items that require a vote as it relates to the community development block grant items, and I'm prepared to do roll call for you on behalf of the City Clerk. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, roll call away.
So for those in attendance, Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so I understand we've got some action items here, which is a bit unusual for a work session. And maybe in lieu of our clerk, Ms. Mester, would you want to read the first item then?
Certainly. You have three items related to CDBG, and so if you would like, I can read them all. And then, of course, in concurrence with the city attorney, you could do independent votes. The first one is TR 20-18, Resolution to amend the City of Falls Church FY 2020 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan to include additional CDBG CARES Act COVID-19-related funds to be awarded through the CDBG grantee subrecipient agreement. The second item is TR 20-16, Resolution to adopt FY 2021 Funding Recommendations for Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program Funds and to authorize the city manager to enter into annual agreements with Arlington County and grantees to participate in the CDBG and home programs. And the third item would be TR 20-17, Resolution to, one, terminate the FY 21 to 23 Cooperative Agreement with Arlington County for receipt of Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program Funds effective June 30th, 2021; and, two, negotiate a cooperative agreement effective July 1, 2021 with Fairfax County; and, three, authorize the city manager to notify those jurisdictions of that action and take other actions necessary to implement this decision. And with that, I'll turn it back to the mayor and the city manager, along with the staff that have joined this evening to discuss these important items.
All right, thank you so much. Why don't we turn it over to the city manager and staff to give a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council, and I'll turn it over to Nancy Vincent and Dana Lewis in just a moment. But I did want to just note, we have three action items requested tonight. One is an action that impacts FY 20, which is an allocation of some emergency CARES funds through CDBG that we're recommending be put towards emergency rent relief. The second impacts FY 21, which is our, I would say, fairly normal allocation of our CDBG and home grants to our subrecipients for FY 21. And then, third, really is about FY 22. And for that, staff is recommending that we move into a cooperative agreement with Fairfax County. We currently have a cooperative agreement with Arlington County, and we'll explain, we think, the reasons behind this shift and the alignment that we'll gain through our already close relationship with Fairfax County in the area of human services. I do want to note at the outset that we're also joined by Fairfax County's Director of Human Services, Tom Fleetwood, and we're very pleased to have him here tonight to answer any questions the City Council might have on this third item about shifting to a cooperative agreement for CDBG funds with Fairfax County. So with that quick overview, let me turn it over to Nancy, and we'll go through each of these items. Thank you.
Thank you, Wyatt. And actually, I'm going to turn it over directly to Dana, who's the manager of the CDBG program, to do the staff report.
All right, Dana, who are you turning it over to?
It's just me. Hello, everyone. So I'm going to try to be brief with these, since we have three items and they're all CDBG-related, and I want us to be able to get to the third item so that Tom can speak. So just as background, the city receives CDBG funds from HUD, Community Development Block Grant, and Home Entitlement Grants from HUD, and we have an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with Arlington County. They qualify as an urban county in the same metropolitan statistical area. We're not able to get the funds on our own because we're too small, and we don't have enough low-income population in our locality. And so cities with population of 50,000 or more, or counties with populations of 200,000 or more, qualify to be an urban county. So that's why we are in partnership with Arlington County, with a cooperative agreement with them. So it's two different programs. CDBG funds can be used for housing, social services, facility improvements that benefit persons with low and moderate incomes. Home funds are more housing-related, and they can be used for the construction, acquisition, or finance of affordable housing, and to provide rental assistance for persons with low to moderate incomes. And then, home funds can also be used for down payment and closing cost assistance to eligible first-time home buyers. So that's just to kind of give you a background on the program and how it works. And the City of Falls Church, all of our programs serve low-to-moderate households. So the first item talks about the amending the action plan to receive COVID funds. So we are currently, right now, in fiscal year 2020, as Wyatt talked about, which were actually allocated last year for this year. It's a bit confusing. But so this budget year ends June 30th. So the COVID funds are out right now, so we need to amend our action plan for 2020 so that we can get the funds next month and start using them. So once you get CDBG funds, you have to do, once you get it for the fiscal year, then you have to do an action plan on what you're going to do this year. And then, at the end of the year, you have to do a consolidated plan that talks about what you did. So action plan is what you're going to do, and consolidated plan is what you did. And so in order for us to get these funds into, you know, this June and start using them immediately, we have to amend this year's action plan that talks about what we were going to do. Luckily for us, one of our grantees was already doing rent and utility assistance, so the Housing Commission and staff felt like it made the most sense to take our $39,095 that we're receiving from HUD to serve people affected by COVID who are suffering a loss of income, and put it towards the Falls Church Community Services Council, which is the grantee that we are already giving funds to. As in FY 2020, they received $4,100 to go towards rent utilities assistance. So what we'll be doing is taking these funds and giving it to them, and amending our action plan, saying that we were already going to give them the money to do rent, but now we're going to give them more money to actually serve people affected by COVID. And so what we're planning on doing is allowing people to get up to three months of rent, and it will be $700 each month if they qualify for the program. So that is pretty much how the first program works. Are there any questions on the first item?
Any questions?
I do have some questions.
All right, Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thanks, Dana, for that presentation. That's good news that we have more money. Do we have to spend all that money by the end of June? Suppose we only get $35,000 more dollars worth of requests. What happens to the remaining money?
Well, we don't have to use it by the end of June, but we are getting a lot of requests. So far, we've had 14 requests, and that is for emergency rent and utilities. And that's without us even putting out any type of outreach. So that's through referrals and people that we know that Leslyn Barrow, our human services specialist, is working with. So we don't think that the funds are going to last very long. So, you know, we expect that it's going to be a lot of use and that we're going to run out pretty quickly.
So if we run out pretty quickly, what are the options? Are there other options for the people that still need help?
Well, we also have funds that, in this year's budget, for our regular emergency rent program that's not CDBG-related. And so we have about $6,000 in that program. I'm correct, Nancy? About $6,000 in that program. So we're also using those funds and the CDBG funds. So those are the only funds we have right now, but we just got word that we might actually get additional funds today, but, you know, I'm not sure exactly if we're going to receive those.
And then, so what I would really like to make sure is that anyone who needs it gets it. So...
Yes, definitely. I don't think it's going to be a problem with that, because we are working on the flyer now, and we expect that to be out by next week. Once the flyer goes out and everyone knows that these funds are available, I think we're going to use them all.
But again, if we end up with another $10,000 worth of need, I don't know if there's a way for City Council to go back and allocate more money to this program, but I would ask everyone if that's possible, that we should make sure that anyone who does need it gets that help.
What we could do is, after it runs out, maintain a waiting list of people that need the funds, and then that way, we know the number and how much they actually need.
Okay, that would be good. Just so we know, if there's more funds to allocate, we should be able to do that. And then, how are you getting the word out to families? You said a flyer?
We're going to do flyers and put it on the website. And, you know, O-COM is going to help us get the word out. And we also are working with the schools. Social workers at the schools are helping us to get the word out. We'll give it, you know, put it out as much as we can. And this is a need that's not just with low-income families as well. You know, we also have the ability in our, you know, our regular emergency program to serve persons that might have a bit higher income. Because even if you make, you know, a higher salary, you still are paying, if you're paying more than 30% of your income for rent, you're still going to be challenged to pay it.
Right. And do we have any kind of mortgage relief program, or just rent?
We currently do not have a mortgage relief program, but I know that there is a federal CARES Act mortgage relief program, so we are giving people that information.
Okay. So thank you for all your work on this.
You're welcome.
Hey, Dana, this is Ross. Real quick question.
Hi, Ross.
Hey, how are you? Thank you for that report. Tell me again the threshold for who qualifies for this.
We're going up to 80% of AMI for the CDBG-funded program.
80% of AMI. And do you guys have a projection of when and how much that need is, up to that 80% AMI?
We are seeing need at every income. I mean, you know, even higher incomes, lower incomes. The people that we're serving right now tend to be restaurant workers who are worried that their jobs are not going to come back, so they are at the lower incomes. But we've also had requests pretty much a range of every income. If you've lost your job or you haven't been working, then you have the need to pay rent.
And so when folks qualify for this, they get how many months? How much is committed? Do you work there and basically give each person one month's rent, or do you commit to a certain number of months?
We're trying to be flexible, but we've designed it so that you could get $700 a month for up to three months. But if there's a person who needs one month, we would just give them that month. And then, we would have more money to give, you know, if there's a person that has a higher need, then we would look at that. So we're trying to be flexible and look at individually what people need.
Okay. I would just ask that, I understand that it may be a first-come, first-served, that, you know, we commit to one month at a time to give the greatest number of people the opportunity for short-term relief as opposed to committing to multiple months to those that are applying first. Just help spread that out. It may help over a shorter term, but for a larger number of people.
Yeah, the reason we chose to do that is mainly because of the restaurant workers that have been coming in, because they don't have jobs to go back to. So it's not going to get better next month, you know? So that's why we kind of made that decision. The majority of people are restaurant workers, and so the need is going to be, you know, they're already behind because they've made payment arrangements with their landlords to spread their rent out, but they still have to make that payment, and then they don't have a job to go back to, you know, is what we have been seeing.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure we help as many people as possible.
Yes.
So it's not concentrated in just a small number. But I know you guys will do your best to validate and authenticate who exactly needs what and how much and when. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Dana, it's Letty.
Hi, Letty.
Hi. I actually had the same suggestion as Ross. So hearing what you mentioned at the Housing Commission last week, where you were getting triple the number of service calls that we normally would get, my guess is that the $39,000 plus the existing $4,000 will go really quickly. And if anything, we're going to need to find more money. So if possible, I think I like the idea of actually trying to serve as many people as possible by offering one month's rent, then we keep a tally of what the needs are. And then, a request I would have for Wyatt is, as we do budget markup, whether we actually have other opportunities to pull out CARES funding money, because this does feel like a direct expense related to COVID response, and then set that aside in a contingency fund of some sort so that we can quickly deploy. Because I do share, I think everyone on council shares the belief that we should be able to address these basic needs. And I would hate for us to have to keep a long list of people and then have them risk getting evicted while we're trying to find additional money for them. So if we can be more nimble at addressing the needs as we figure out what the demand is after the first batch of money goes, I think that's important.
Understood. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments on this first item? We do have two others.
I do have two quick questions.
Sure.
Question number one, Dana, how do you establish eligibility?
So everyone is going through Leslyn Barrow, who's our human services worker, our human services specialist. She's looking at pay stubs, and they have to prove that it's COVID-related, you know what I mean? So it can't be, you just have not been paying your rent for several months before this happened. So she looks at pay stubs, and she looks to see if they're receiving, you know, because some people are receiving unemployment, which might put them over. And she's looking at medical bills, total household expenses, everything. So she does kind of a full intake on each person, and the Community Services Council does the same thing.
Okay, good. Thank you. Second question is, is the program limited to residents of the City of Falls Church?
Yes.
Good. Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions on this particular item?
Just one, if I could, to follow on what Mr. Snyder asked. Are the residents of the City of Falls Church typically living in apartment buildings in the City of Falls Church, or could the money go to an apartment? I guess they wouldn't be residents of the city if they weren't living in a city apartment building. Is that the bottom line?
Yes. All right, do you mean workers, like, say, people that work in the city?
Yeah.
I don't think we would need to serve them, because, I mean, every locality is getting these same CDBG funds, and they all are standing up programs to do the same thing. So they could probably get, you know, the help wherever they live.
Okay, that's the right way to ask the question that I wanted to ask, so thank you.
No worries.
All right, any other questions on this item? If not, why don't we move, Dana, to the next portion of your presentation?
Okay, the next item is, let's see. The next item is what we're looking at, remember we talked about how we're in 2021? So what we're looking at now is 20, I mean, we're currently in 2020, sorry. So we're looking at who we're going to fund for 2021, which starts July 1st, 2020, and ends June 30th, 2021. So this year, we did not have the normal RFP process that we normally have, because we were looking at our next item, which I'm going to talk about, and that's going with another locality as far as our cooperative agreement. So we decided not to have a RFP because we did not know when the timing on that was going to take place. So we held a public needs hearing. The Housing Commission held this, and they looked at our action plan from 2020 and decided to fund organizations that met the needs for low-to-moderate incomes. And those were the four grantees that we had in 2020. We will be funding them again in 2021. And so that will be the Falls Church Community Services Council, which I just talked about, which provides emergency rent utilities. The second one is Mount Daniel, who provides job training. They provide, you know, homework assistance and job training, which is ESL classes for low-income parents. The third one is the Falls Church Housing Corporation, which is doing rehab on their aging property. And then, the fourth one is Homestretch, which is providing rental assistance, transitional housing for formerly homeless. So those are the four grantees. And so we're bringing those recommendations that the Housing Commission made to fund, to you to approve, and that would start July 1st. So we'd have $57,025 of CDBG funds and $30,129 of home funds for FY 2021. And so, and like I said, all four of those programs serve low-to-moderate income persons, city residents. And so that is what our second item is about, is asking you all to approve those funding recommendations. And this is the same recommendation that we ask every year.
All right, are there any questions on this particular item? All right, thank you very much. Why don't you proceed to the last portion of your presentation, Dana?
Mayor Tarter, I did have a question. I just couldn't get my button fast enough.
Please.
Dana, so these organizations have all been informed that they're receiving, they're on the list to be approved?
Yes, I've talked to all four of them. We've talked about the next item. We've talked about FY 2021. We've talked about 2020. I've had in-depth conversations with all four grantees.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any other? Yes, Mr. Duncan?
I mean, maybe this is obvious, but, I mean, all four of these groups, you know, presumably find more work to do now during a virus times than they did before. Is there any way that any of them can get their teeth into COVID aid money, either through the feds or through us?
Well, I don't really think that's true, because Mount Daniel is not really holding their classes right now. And then, we talked to the Housing Corporation. The majority of the persons over at Winter Hill are on, have housing choice vouchers, so their income's not affected by COVID because they're not working. So they get a set amount based on their social security or whatever income they have coming in. And then, Homestretch is in the same boat. Their rent has not changed, and they are renting from a property that the city owns over in Virginia Village. And so their rent is reduced. So the three of them are pretty good. It's the rental assistance is the one that's seeing the increased need.
All right, are there any other questions? All right, why don't you proceed to the last portion of your presentation, Ms. Lewis?
Okay. Pull that up. Okay, our, I'm looking for the document. Okay, so our third item is, remember I talked about that we have a cooperation agreement with Arlington County currently for receipt of CDBG and home funds? And that is a three-year cooperation agreement from 2021 to 2023. And so what we are looking at doing, effective June 30, 2021, is, no, so we're looking at terminating our agreement with Arlington County and making the same agreement with Fairfax County, effective July 1, 2021. And so, and the, what, the action that we are asking is, we need to authorize the city manager to notify those jurisdictions of that action so that we can implement this decision. And so we've talked, we've thought long and hard about this, and we have been, we've been, had a cooperation agreement with Arlington County since 1985. And so we have not had a lot of funds in the past several years. Our grant seems to get lower and lower. It's a lot of staff time, and Arlington County does not allow us to participate in other housing programs. And so we had a conversation with Fairfax County, and we talked about this same agreement. And what we're looking at is Fairfax County, we already have agreements with Fairfax County as far as the housing choice voucher program. We operate with them, and we have all of our human services contracts are with them. And so we talked about, how would it work if we had our CDBG and home agreement with them? Because it would have been really helpful for projects such as the Miller House. Remember when we were going through the Miller House process, we couldn't use CDBG funds for that project because it was in the city, and we would have needed to use Fairfax County CDBG funds, and we weren't able to do it because we did not have an agreement with them. So the city, remember I told you that we add to a jurisdiction's urban county qualification? So the amount of money that Falls Church brings to a jurisdiction is the same, whether we stay with Arlington County or go with Fairfax County. So that amount of money, the $57,154 CDBG funds, and the $30,129 in home funds, would come with us and go to Fairfax County if we decide to go with them. So the city does not lose any money by making this choice. And so we met with Fairfax, and we talked about how this would work. One of the most important things that we wanted to look at was to make sure that our nonprofit partners would remain whole, and they have assured us that that would happen, the four programs that we just talked about. So the Housing Corporation would receive their funding, and Homestretch would receive their funding. Mount Daniel, Family Outreach, I met with them, and they said that they could augment the funding that they receive through the community foundation. So they felt like they would be okay. And then, as far as the Community Services Council, we feel like they would be able to receive the additional funding that they need through our Community Services Fund. And so some of the benefits of this partnership, if you look at your, if you look at your staff report, the first one is what I talked about, the connection to the community of the Fairfax County Human Services to the community of the Fairfax County Human Services System. We already have contracts regarding homelessness, health, uh, aging, intellectual disability services. So this would build on those kind of connections that we already have. And then one of the biggest things is that if we had this partnership, we could do regional housing development projects and further collaboration. Um, and then the third item is that, and this is one of the ones that the Housing Commission was really excited about, is that the city would have access to housing finance opportunities for future, future affordable housing development. Uh, neither the Arlington County nor the city have a housing authority. And so when we look at doing, you know, developing affordable housing or some type of big project, that type of thing, funding is always an issue. Um, if we were to partner with Fairfax County and their housing authority, they could possibly serve as the lender to a future development projects. Um, and so we could use, um, we could do capital projects also with rental subsidies and they also have the ability to issue bonds. And so we could look at doing scattered site acquisitions. Um, like I said, the fund, the group home would have been a perfect opportunity to use this new partnership. Um, but, you know, unfortunately, we didn't have that agreement at that time. And then, as I also mentioned, our grantees will remain whole. Um, so we were excited about that. And then the fourth thing is that Fairfax County has a NOFA for nonprofits, Notice of Funding Availability. Um, and so our nonprofits would be eligible to apply for this, um, since they're serving persons with low incomes. So that would be an additional opportunity that they would have. And then the last one of the, I think I'm on the fifth one, is our city residents would be eligible to participate in the Fairfax County Housing Rehabilitation, Home Repair and Down Payment Assistance Programs. Uh, and Arlington County has the same program and we, I asked them, could city residents participate in these programs since we get our CDBG funds from them? And they said no. Um, they checked into it and that was not a partnership that we were going to be able to make. Uh, and then the last item is that our funding continues to decrease every year. It takes a lot of staff time, um, to manage the program and we don't really have a lot of funds to do it. And so Fairfax County would assume all administrative responsibilities. Um, currently, as you know, we're in a hiring freeze and so we're down a staff person. So we're all kind of pitching in on that position for the foreseeable future. And so, um, and then Fairfax County has assured us that city interest will be maintained in all housing programs. So I have attached a timeline because I know it's a bit confusing with the timelines so that, um, it's a little bit easier to understand. Um, and staff, we feel like it would be a really good opportunity for us to do. Housing Commission is really excited about it. Um, even Arlington County, when I told them all the benefits that we would have, they said, wow, you should go with them. So just being honest, uh, because they can't offer all of these things. So, um, that's the report. I know it was a lot. And we have, uh, Tom Fleetwood, um, from Fairfax County, who's Director of Housing for Fairfax County, to also answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you so much, uh, Ms. Lewis and also Mr. Fleetwood for being here. I certainly want to give you the opportunity, if there's anything you feel you want to add, um, you're welcome to. Is there anything that you'd like to say that hasn't been said yet?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you very much for having me. I am Tom Fleetwood, um, the Director of the Department of Housing and Community Development in Fairfax County. We are, uh, very excited about this expansion of our partnership with the city, which we see as really completing the circle, uh, of our partnership in housing and human services with you. Uh, we think there's a tremendous amount of potential, uh, for us to, uh, to do even more work together and we're very much looking forward to the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for joining us and all the good work you do for the region. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues for questions or comments. Does anyone on council have any questions or comments for Ms. Lewis or Mr. Fleetwood? All right. Yeah, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thank you. Um, Dana, in terms of the, uh, organizations here in town that have been notified that, uh, they wouldn't be eligible for that money, um, I guess in 2021 going forward, uh, will they have eligibility going through Fairfax and it's not just going through you, um, or going through us? Now, how would that work?
So what, what we talked about with Tom is that we're talking about two, um, grantees and that would be the Housing Corporation and, uh, Homestretch because Mount Daniel felt like that the community foundation would augment the additional funds that they get through us. And then the, um, community services, I'm getting my, uh, mind confused. So the Community Services Council would get the additional funds through the city's Community Services Fund because both of those are not housing projects. Um, they are public service projects. And so Fairfax County has already, um, put aside funds for public service. So they would be eligible again, Tom, if you could help me out, they would be eligible to apply again in FY 2023, I believe. Is that correct, Tom?
So for your, for Falls Church Housing Corporation and Homestretch, uh, what we would do is, is we would identify, um, means through our existing funding structure to provide the funding, uh, to the organizations through a non, uh, effectively a non-purchase order with the city. Um, for any other organization that is seeking to apply for CDBG fund, uh, for targeted public services, they can do so through our, uh, our funding pool application.
Okay. So I would say Homestretch is, has been an important part of this community for quite some time. Uh, and I want to make sure that, um, although they've been notified, they still have an opportunity, uh, to access funds that they would need to operate and commit on their mission.
I have a question as well, Mr. Mayor?
Of course, Vice Mayor Connolly.
And Dana, I apologize if I missed this as you were saying it, but both Homestretch and the Falls Church Community Services Council serve an area that is larger than the city of Falls Church and they are already in Fairfax County a little bit, correct?
Yes, I don't, Homestretch does, is not currently receiving Fairfax County funds. Uh, and the Community Services Council does receive Fairfax County funds already to serve Fairfax County residents.
Got it. Cause I know actually the majority of, of Homestretch residents do not live in the city of Falls Church. They live in Fairfax or further out even.
Yes, but they're currently not receiving Fairfax County funds when I talked to Christopher Faye. So they, they are-
They at some point though, if they applied through the Fairfax County process? Or they would still remain as Falls Church funds?
Yeah, that would be, as far as their CDBG funds, they'll definitely get those. Uh, but that would be up to Fairfax County. I'm not sure as far as, Tom, did you want to answer that?
I think, uh, maybe I can be of assistance on this one. Um, Homestretch has in the past, uh, received Fairfax County funds for the acquisition of housing units and, uh, in fact, is still, uh, still owns units, uh, with FCRHA financing on them. Uh, for any other programs, uh, that they wish to operate through our funding pool, they can certainly apply for that. And, and I, I might note that they have applied for it.
Okay. Thank you.
So I've got one last question and maybe this is more for the mayor, um, because this was a relatively short fuse on this decision and I understand the timing associated with it. Has anybody spoken with our colleagues, uh, over in Arlington County, uh, about this? Um, I know that it may be, uh, obviously staff to staff decision, but I want to make sure that, um, the way that this is interpreted and there's not a broader relationship here that needs to be considered, uh, with Arlington before making this decision.
So I had the same concern. I did speak with the city manager about it, who spoke with their county manager about it. Um, and so my understanding is it's not an issue. But Mr. Shields, maybe you could speak to it with a little more detail?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, that is, uh, that is correct. I think that staff have been talking about this for several months. And so I think Arlington, um, understands the, uh, the reasons why we were moving in this direction and does not have any bad feeling about it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask?
Yes, of course, Mr. Duncan.
Uh, it's about the affordability, uh, matter. Uh, Ms. Lewis, you mentioned that, uh, some type of big project, uh, would be more possible. Uh, I wonder while Mr. Fleetwood is here with us, if, um, if we could hear just a little bit about how that might work. I mean, let's, let's say that, uh, the city wanted to try to incentivize the building of a multifamily, um, unit, uh, structure that, uh, either had a higher percentage of, uh, tenants who were 60% AMI or had a lower AMI than we typically have been able to pull off here in any of our buildings. Um, if we had that as a policy objective, which I think we sort of do, uh, would a building like that need, you know, could it be in the city and still participate in the kind of arrangement that you were describing there? Or would it need to be in the county and somehow we would try to, you know, encourage the tenants to be people who live or had lived or, or were working in the city?
Tom, did you want to answer that?
Sure. Um, the, the long and short of it is that the array of tools that the housing authority can bring to the table, uh, can help, uh, put, uh, the city and, and more specifically perhaps in one of our common affordable housing development partners in a position to develop a multifamily project in the city. The tools that the housing authority can bring to bear are, as Ms. Lewis mentioned, our capacity to, uh, to do bond financing, uh, our ability to act as, uh, as the lender into, into the project, uh, the technical expertise that we bring from a real estate finance and development perspective. Uh, being a housing authority and, um, uh, one of the special 39 housing authorities nationally with, uh, with, uh, particular flexibility in how we operate our federal programs, we also might be able to pair some of our financing, uh, with federal rent subsidies through the Housing Choice Voucher Program. So in effect, it, our participation here is a vehicle for creativity in delivering affordable housing solutions in the city. I hope that, hope that's helpful.
That's a terrific answer. Thank you very much.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I did have a quick one.
Of course, Ms. Hardy.
Yeah. So the financing option sounds really promising. So that's really great to hear. While that obviously takes some time to incubate, um, in the near term, I think, Mr. Fleetwood, you mentioned kind of the rehab and down payment assistance programs that city residents could start participating in. So if we were to authorize this and pass it tonight, how quickly could we stand that up and, you know, whether it's that program or other ones that the county has that we could start getting access to?
It would be, uh, upon, uh, the effective date of, uh, of, of when you are part of our, uh, urban county.
Qualification.
Thank you. So, uh, we're probably about a year away from that. And we have, uh, the programs that were mentioned, we already have up and running. Uh, there are Home Repair for the Elderly Program and our, uh, Down Payment and Closing, uh, Cost Assistance Program. So those are going programs, uh, that we would, uh, be able to, uh, to make available for city residents upon the effective date of the, uh, of the agreement.
That's great to hear because we've talked about wanting to stand up some of those of our own, but clearly without the scale, it just doesn't make as much sense. So I think this is a great opportunity for regional cooperation. So thank you for that. Uh, a request for Wyatt and Dana, maybe, um, we can schedule kind of separate time to figure out all the other different opportunities that we might have coming our way. Cause I think it'd be important for council to know of, um, new housing kind of programs you might be able to offer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Other, other questions or comments? I'm going to ask the, uh, Ms. Messner, are you able to read comments that are sent to the, um, city clerk at FallsChurchVA.gov?
Uh, no, I am not, but, um, earlier I had checked in with Celeste and she had received none at the start of the meeting.
Okay. So we are going to take action here. I would like to ask for public comment. I don't know, is Celeste watching this video?
Um, I do not believe so at this time, um, but my-
Tonight, I'll just, uh, note that tonight is Celeste's anniversary. So I'm quite confident that she is not watching tonight's meeting, or at least I hope she's not.
She was at the beginning, but I've, she has agreed to sign off and celebrate the 35 years of, uh, marriage. Um, this was publicized with the email address for comments. Um, and of course, any will be forwarded to, um, council if we receive them after the start of this meeting.
Okay. I'm going to ask the city attorney with respect to public comment on these items. Is there anything you recommend at this point?
No, the, they're not items for which a public hearing is actually required. And because of the way they arose, it really, um, there wasn't, we weren't able to set that up for tonight. So it's, it's not a legal requirement that you get public hearing on taking these actions.
All right. Nonetheless, I'm going to let the public know that if you do want to make comment, that will be made to cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. That's cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. Um, and you're welcome to comment on this or anything else you hear this evening. Um, with that, I'm going to go ahead and see if there's a motion as to the first item, which is TR 20-18.
Mayor, I move to adopt TR 20-18.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Messner, would you like to call roll?
I certainly will. And just for the record, I did want to reinforce the comment by Ms. Lewis that the Housing Commission did review the CDBG items before you this evening for your public board and commission input. And with that, I'll call the vote for TR 20-18. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Tartar?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a motion regarding TR 20-16?
Mayor, I move to adopt TR 20-16.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Duncan on the second. Uh, Ms. Messner, would you like to call this vote as well?
Sure. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Tartar?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
All right. And, uh, the next item, do we have a resolution as well, or a, yes, a resolution as to TR 20-17? Okay. Well, it looks like we won't be, uh, now, I'm sure there's someone here who would like to-
Mayor, I move to adopt TR 20-17.
Second.
And Mr. Snyder on the second. My, uh, Ms. Messner?
Sure. Uh, the vote for TR 20-17. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Tartar?
Yes.
Thank you, councilman. Mayor, that also passes unanimously.
All right. Well, thank you all so much for your fine work in getting us to where we are tonight.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Okay. Um, let's move on now to the next item, which is the budget. Mr. Shields, Ms. Bawa, are you going to be handling that presentation?
Uh, we will. Thank you, Mayor Tartar, members of council. Um, I'll just say a few words of introduction and, um, and then turn it over to Ms. Bawa. The, um, two things of, of note for the city council, one, uh, we do have round three of the council's, uh, budget questions with responses to those questions. And I won't go through those, but if there are any follow-up questions on those or other clarifications desired, uh, we'd be happy to hear those and try to respond to those as best we can. What tonight's work session is really, um,
What tonight's work session is really intended to accomplish is to provide the council's opportunity to mark up the budget, to make changes that we will then prepare into the final budget ordinance that would be before you for public hearing and final action on Tuesday, May 26. And Ms. Messner has the council questions up, but Ms. Messner, if you could move to the markup document and put that up on the screen, and we'll just touch base on a couple of things. We've, since we last discussed the budget, there have been two pieces of new information that I think have opened up some opportunities to try to accomplish important objectives for the city. One of those is some relief on the city's subsidy for Womata, and this is news that came around midweek last week where Womata has received additional emergency funding through the CARES Act, and that funding has helped reduce the city's obligation to Womata. The net effect of that is $385,000, a reduction in the use of NVTA's 30% formula funds towards the Womata subsidy. But if you'll recall, last week, we also had a briefing from the NVTA in which they noted their revenue shortfall, which will translate into a reduction in NVTA 30% funds available to the city, and that's about $105,000. So the net effect is that we have $280,000 of additional NVTA 30% funds, which can be used only for transportation projects in the budget. So that's one piece of news, and in the markup options, we've provided a suggestion on how that $280,000 could be allocated to restore funding for the neighborhood traffic calming program and to restore funding for sidewalks or the LED light conversion project, taking both of those back to the March 9 budget level. So that's one piece of important information. The second piece of information is that on Tuesday last week, we received Secretary Aubrey Lane, who's the Secretary of Finance for the Commonwealth of Virginia. He provided a memo to all the localities in Virginia noting what our allocation of federal CARES funding will be. The city's allocation is $1,275,277. The use of these funds is very strictly regulated under the rules of the CARES Act and under the published regulations of the U.S. Treasury. We have signed a certification that we will follow those regulations rigorously, and if we don't, we've also acknowledged that the state can then get that money back from the city. But to the state's credit, they have, rather than have a real cumbersome reimbursement program like we typically would have after a presidential declaration of emergency, these funds have been actually allocated to the city, and we anticipate that on or about June 1, that amount will be deposited in the city's account. But the uses of them can be for unbudgeted expenditures that are directly related to the city's response to the COVID-19 emergency. So unbudgeted as of March of the current year and uses directly related to new expenditures in response to COVID-19. So in this proposed budget, we do think that there are certain uses that we would allocate now, the total $75,000. But we also recognize that we need to have a larger strategic discussion with the city council on the use of the larger amount of $1.2 million. As was noted earlier in tonight's meeting, some eligible uses do include helping our community with certain emergency expenses, and that is something that other localities are looking at in terms of the use of their CARES Act funds. The city has incurred also direct expenditures for our preparation and response. We may in the future include, accrue costs for helping our community with testing or with a whole host of other measures to help us get through this crisis effectively and to recover effectively, and also to protect as many of our residents as possible from getting sick. So we have not yet done that full strategic review, but we do know that certain things we are going to need, and those include the funding for the registrar to help manage the upcoming elections in a COVID environment. And the registrar has already put us on notice of his concerns about his current staffing levels, given the higher workload to process mail-in ballots and to deal with a whole host of issues related to running a good election and a major presidential election in the current environment. And so we've allocated a portion of the CARES dollars to try to help with that. But much more to come on that discussion, and I would recommend that we not try to have the full discussion on the use of those funds tonight or even upon the adoption of FY21 budget, but to do so with as much information as possible and thinking ahead of what all the potential uses will be and how we can use it most strategically to help our community get through this. So that's an introduction. Again, we'd like council input on this proposed sort of straw man for a markup document, and then we'll take your direction and produce the actual budget ordinance for action next Tuesday. Let me pause before we go to questions. Ms. Bawa, do you want to fill in any additional details or add to what I've reported tonight?
No, you've summed it up pretty well. I think we'll open to questions, and any details are required, I'd be happy to provide.
Before we go to questions, the vice mayor and myself may have a disclosure statement to read. I'm going to go ahead and read mine right now. I make the following statement before city council's consideration of TO 20-05 and TO 20-07, the general fund budget and tax rates for fiscal year 2021. My wife is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by the FY2021 budget. I can participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Vice Mayor, do you have anything you want to say?
I do. I make the following statement before city council's consideration of TO 20-05 and TO 20-07, the FY2021 general fund budget and tax rates. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by these matters. I can participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
All right, thank you. Let's open it up to questions and comments. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Mayor, I do.
All right, Ms. Hardy.
Great. So Wyatt, great news on Womata getting more money and us needing to be able to return those projects back. So with $100,000 back for NTC and the proposed $180 for sidewalks, does that restore everything that was originally proposed, or will those programs still come up a little short?
That gets us back to the numbers that were proposed originally on March 9. Now, there is the other issue with respect to the NTC program of the $400,000 that the council appropriated in FY20. And I just, you didn't ask the question, but I'll just note, where that stands today is that I have asked staff to place an administrative hold on the use of that $400,000 until the fall, when we can reassess the full fiscal impact of the current emergency. So that's the status quo. The council certainly can direct otherwise, but, you know, I've relayed to council that is what I have directed staff to do in response to the current emergency. And that's part of a whole suite of spending restrictions that we've imposed administratively to try to get through the current fiscal year FY20 without running a major deficit, given the sharp falloff in meals tax and hotel tax receipts specifically.
So if we were to adopt that recommendation and put a hole in that money that was from the surplus we dealt with back in January and February, would you recommend the same for the, I guess, $280,000 that we could appropriate in this budget?
That is a good point. That would be my recommendation, but I understand, you know, the council's, the council has pushed pretty steadily throughout this whole budget process to try to address the community requests on neighborhood traffic calming. So on the positive side, we've got good news that we can restore that funding in the budget. We have not yet had that discussion about whether we should hold that back and be a bit more careful of this money as well. I'd be happy to get council, we can certainly have that discussion. I've generally had a view kind of across the board that wherever there is discretionary, I call it discretionary, but pay-as-you-go types of projects, that we can delay, that we do delay until we see how this shakes out.
I guess for the, if we do decide to go with $180,000 as recommended in this report here, what actually could get done? So with the other 400, that's kind of on hold, I kind of want to marry it up with the queue of projects to figure out, well, realistically, what's going to get done, and so we can also manage expectations ourselves and with the community of what that means.
Yeah, that's a good question, and I'd love to have Cindy Messner jump in because she's been working most closely with our NTC staff. I will just say, by way of introduction, the big one is the Great Falls and Little Falls project, which is really kind of quite teed up for action with the final meeting on the conceptual planning scheduled very soon. And so that is the, you know, that's the dollar amount to kind of get the first one that's in queue through completion. But Cindy, could you provide more detail on that?
I'd be glad to. Sorry for being slightly off camera while I plug in the tablet. So as Mr. Shields noted, the Great Falls/Little Falls is the next big project that's in the queue and has been there for quite a while, and this Thursday, May 21, at 3:00 p.m., we'll be having the community meeting to finalize the plan and seek their final approval and concurrence. That one's estimated at about 230, 240. So if the 400,000 that's currently on administrative hold could be freed up on revenue assessment, we'd be able to, we should be able to complete that project with the final community concurrence that we're going through the process now. The 100,000, if it proceeds with FY21, a large portion of that is 30% money and in the transportation, special transportation fund, and so we would be monitoring NVTA revenues, but that could finish clearing out the current queue. Right now, the items in the queue that we're doing are the administrative and signage and not all of the speed humps or more crosswalk efforts. And then the queue would be cleared up and we'd be teed up for future projects coming in, of which we're already starting to receive some requests at the very early stages. So that's where we'd be on the neighborhood traffic calming. For the streetlights and sidewalk, I know there was a question from last council meeting about the streetlights, and we included that response in the budget questions that Mr. Shields referenced. If we were to replace the 1,100 streetlights with LED in one project versus based over multiple years, the estimate for that is a $44,000 per year operating budget savings. Staff recommendation is to do the LED streetlights first for that cost savings and efficiency and economy of scale while Dominion's doing other projects in the area. Concurrently, we would actually develop the program for the sidewalk program, which isn't stood up and ready to go with any kind of administrative or community input design. And then when the lights are done, this would be in the CIP, and we'd be able to continue with the sidewalk program. So that's where we are on NTC. And then the staff recommendation for streetlights first, developing the sidewalk program and then proceeding. Besides Great Falls and Little Falls, the other community streets we're working on are Nolan, North Oak, South Oak, and currently this week, West Jefferson is under construction, and so that NTC project will be done. And as we announced last week, Annandale and Gundry is now done. Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Shields.
Ms. Hardy, this is Kieran. May I add a little layer of detail to this? So the 400,000 that we have in fiscal year 20 towards NTC, that is city's operating funding, I mean, the one-time funding, but in-house funding. However, the 100,000 that we have in fiscal year 21 is NVTA 30%. So even though NVTA 30% is reliant on their revenues, these will be appropriated, and Mr. Shields can decide on his administrative hold, but I would think the hold applies more rigorously to the pay-as-you-go money that comes from our operating funding. And NVTA funding, how it works is that it gets trued up at the end of the year based on what their actuals come out to be, and then it impacts the following year's allocations.
Got it. So if we decide not to hold the $280,000 between the 100 for NTC and the $180,000, what I'm hearing is that next in queue is going to be Great Falls/Little Falls, which costs 240, so we'd only be able to do half or less than half of that project unless we rejigger the prioritization of what was in the queue? Cindy, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Or have we released some of that 400,000 that's on hold from FY20 to kind of make that project whole and see it all the way through?
And that currently is a focus with Ms. Bawa and Mr. Shields, that we're monitoring the revenues and the underexpendables, because we know that's a priority focus area.
Okay. Without knowing all the other projects in the queue, I guess, on face value, I would support kind of using the $280,000 to restore these two programs. I think they were important enough, and I think there was a majority that I heard that shared this concern as well. Turning to stormwater, I know that's one that also is not going to get new funding, and I don't think any of us would really support increasing the stormwater fee as it is. Does staff have any options or looked at kind of what we can do without new funding within the existing fee structure that we already have?
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Yes, we have been going through the amount of money that is currently in the fund to try to identify what we can get done. And so some examples of the ones that we believe we should be able to push forward on would include the Rens Branch project. There's an Ellison Street project. There is Big Chimneys, obviously, that money has been appropriated for the stormwater improvements there. The Papal Drive project and the Lincoln project would be the ones that we believe we could get done with our current estimates with the money that's on hand. We would also do as much preliminary engineering as we can, particularly for the Ellison Street project is one that is quite complex on the permitting side. I'm sorry, I said Ellison. Trammell Branch project is complex on the permitting side, and obviously with the Park Authority moving through forward with its project, we're trying to reserve some cash on hand to advance that preliminary engineering so that we're clear on exactly what our best solution is in a way that will not interfere with the new dual trails once they're complete. So that's the list of the top priority ones that we think we could get done, and they're pretty significant projects in their own right.
That's also good news, and I think that probably should be your third piece of good news. I think previously we were kind of expecting that stormwater would have to be on hold, so I'm hearing at least two or three projects we should be able to get done or at least advance through design, which I think will make advance through design, which I think will make our stormwater task force and others in the community feel a little better that we're trying to do as much as we can. So I think that's important to get out to the community as well. Moving on to the CARES funding, this will be my last question, and then I'll turn it over. So I agree with the approach that I don't think we should jump to spend the 1.2 or 1.3 million immediately. I think it's important to kind of step back and figure out what all the needs could be. What are the 75,000 you mentioned in the staff report is what you're recommending to appropriate for now? Is that for the temporary registrar position and then spending we've done to date to respond to the pandemic?
Let me, Ms. Bawa, could you answer that question?
Sure. So there is 30,000 in fiscal year '21 to assist with the assistant registrars position, and then 45,000 for emergency rent relief.
Okay, so the 45 is in addition to the 39 we authorized from CDVG earlier. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Great. Do we think, Wyatt, that's going to meet demand, or we think we're still going to have more than, I guess, 85,000?
If I may, based on the modeling that staff did on, right now, they were allowed to do comeback and ask for relief once. And modeling they did based on six months that they could come back and ask for relief with X number of households, that was the number that's come up as close to a guest estimate. And we'll see, obviously, monitor as we go along. If any additional funding is required, we will come back to council as part of the 1.2.
Okay. So before we have that kind of broader conversation on how else we should appropriate the 1.2 or 1.3 million we get from CARES, I guess, two things that I'd like to at least throw in the hat for consideration is, one, given that the rules are pretty restrictive on how to use the CARES money, you know, business recovery is one of those, I think that would be allowed. I know we all unanimously supported the EDA's grant program a couple weeks ago, stand that up with 100,000 in funds. I wonder whether it'd be better to actually use some CARES money for business recovery and then the EDA funds, which obviously are less restrictive, whether we should keep that flexibility there. So that's one kind of item for consideration. And then second, last week, I already talked about masks. I do think masks really critical for economic recovery. So whether the city procures masks, number one, obviously, for employees on hand, but two, for the community, we only have, you know, 15,000 residents or so. So I think it's pretty realistic for us to think about how we can offer free masks to encourage usage. Or it can be in the form of a volunteer donation drive, if that's cheaper, but something for us to consider, both either using the CARES money or at least allocating resources towards such an effort, I think would be really important for recovery. So with that, I will turn it back to the mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Other comments or questions?
I have a couple of comments, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Wyatt, Karen, thank you guys for working, whether it was serendipitously or through just getting scrappy, to find the money for traffic calming and the spot improvements. I, for one, don't want to see a freeze on any of the money. I think that what is scheduled for 2021, as well as the 400,000 that's been put on hold for 2020, needs to be spent now. We've got the resources and the projects identified to get those done, and frankly, these are public safety issues, and this is the number one issue and request that was made from constituents and from our community members leading up to this budget and just over the last year and a half. So I would ask that we move forward on those projects, allocate this money, and if required, I'd like to make a request, if we need to, to put it to a vote either tonight or next Monday, if that's what's required, to unfreeze that 400,000 that we have scheduled for 2020 and to get that money moving. Again, we have the resources available, we have the projects identified. This is public safety, and frankly, from a logistical perspective, this is probably one of the best times possible for us to get out there and to implement some of these light solutions, because when we do come out of quarantine, enclosures are off the table and things open up, there are going to be folks out and about, and so we've got clear streets now to move forward with these projects, and we should take that opportunity to do so. So I would adamantly request that, one, we open up the 400,000 that's been put on hold and move forward with the 280, and put that money to work and do it now.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lichtenhouse. Other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Duncan.
I can't improve upon Mr. Lichtenhouse's adamancy, so I won't try to. But to say what he said in a somewhat different way, you know, we've gotten into the weeds pretty deep on neighborhood traffic control discussions. I feel sometimes that, you know, we're really, you know, overstepping maybe the normal expectations of council, but we all do feel very strongly about it, I think. And what I would like to see us do is make a clear policy statement attached to a budget figure of 680,000 that we would like for the city to spend by the end of June 2021 on neighborhood traffic calming. You know, you're going to have a new Public Works Director. I'm not sure how that's going to affect some of these projects. I would like the management of the city to, you know, do what it does well, which is manage, and figure out, you know, when and where it's best to do these projects, but with a commitment that they would all be done, as described here earlier tonight, by the end of the fiscal year, whose budget we're going to be passing. Now, whether they all get done this summer or in the early fall or in the spring of next year or in the early summer of next year is less important to me than the fact that we all agree that we would like to see them done, and we feel that we've gotten ourselves in a fiscal position that's strong enough that we can allocate 680,000 to the effort that we all, I think, support. So that's what I would like to, that's the policy statement that I would like to see us emerge from after we, as we vote on the budget next Monday.
Thank you. Other comments, questions, or requests?
Mr. Mayor, Dave Snyder, just a quick comment. Thank you to staff, Cindy Muster in particular, for working on the Wamata funding issue. I know that it's come up in a number of meetings that I've attended and have worked hard to do that, so I just want to indicate that this was a team effort and thank especially the staff. So we do everything we can to contribute positively to the budget situation through our regional work on transportation agencies, and this is a pretty good example of that. So thanks much.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for your assistance with this matter and on regional transportation issues. I would greatly appreciate it. Are there other comments or questions or requests as relate to the budget?
I do have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, of course.
After last week's meeting, I wasn't holding out much hope that we would get to this week's meeting without lots and lots of cuts and trade-offs. So I do want to say thank you for working through all this to make it possible for us to do a lot of the things that we really value. I don't have a lot of questions. Last week, though, we did talk about the library funding, and I don't see that in here. Mr. Shields, are we going to remove library fines or not going to remove library fines?
Yeah, thank you for that question and for the clarification. This proposal, this markup document, keeps the Library Board's preferred policy of terminating the library fine program. One other note that I should have said at the beginning, I also proposed funding some of the NTC by using the hotel tax proceeds, which currently go for downtown beautification or downtown improvements. That also is off the table, it's not in this proposal. So those are two ideas that were discussed last week that are not part of this markup proposal.
Okay. And then as far as the adjustments that we will make as we go forward, just on a time, we keep talking about October as a time that we will start making those adjustments. And I know you and Karen and others will be on top of that as we go along. Will you be giving us regular reports leading up to October on where we are as you normally do? Will there be extra reporting so that we have a much better sense of where we are?
Yes, we will certainly do that, and we'll be watching our monthly financial reports with a lot of interest. We really have no data yet on hotel tax or meals tax, because with the emergency actions taken in March, we pushed those due dates out. So we're still flying pretty blind in terms of what the fiscal fallout is, but as soon as that, you know, we get some data points, we will share those with the City Council.
Okay, thank you. And then I also would just like to, I'm so glad that we'll be able to keep the 400,000 for the Greenway Downs Traffic Calming Project, and looking forward to that starting this summer. I continue my concerns from last week about Great Falls/Little Falls, and I know staff is on it. An email came in this afternoon from Concerned Neighbors on Shadow Walk who have really felt left out of this process. So while that is the first thing on the list, just in reading this email, I feel like there's going to be other concerns raised, and I don't want to have us commit that, yes, we're definitely going to do this if the process hasn't been all the way fully through. I know there is a meeting this week, but I think there may be other concerns raised that may slow this down. And there's four or five different projects in this project? Is there a possibility that some of them would get approved and others wouldn't, or does the whole package have to be approved at once?
Mr. Shields, would you like me to take that question?
Yes, please.
So as Ms. Conley, you noted, the Great Falls/Little Falls has five major components to it. It is a combination of two projects that came in separately because of the way they engineerially flow, and we don't want to solve one problem and push it to another area. But we are in the community dialogue phase. This meeting on Thursday is the new virtual COVID community meeting process to restart the meeting we had to cancel in March. And so based on petitions three years ago and the graphics that were designed and sent out, we will present those, we will seek input from the community. We have received the email that you're referencing, it came into staff as well as City Manager's Office and Mayor and Vice Mayor. And we will work to answer those questions, hear what other questions the community has, and then based on their feedback and how the balloting comes out, things can adjust. So if there's one speed hump that the majority don't want, we might be able to eliminate that and continue with the rest of the project or maybe slightly relocate it. So it can be adjusted. At some point, if too many components are eliminated or the community's only supporting 10%, then the project wouldn't proceed per the CACT adopted guidelines by council, and then the project would have to, the community would have to wait two years before it could be revisited. We're not anticipating that extreme of a situation, because we've had a lot of feedback over the years about the importance of various components, but we look forward to the staff, Jeff Sykes and Zach Bradley, and I will be on the call teleconference to hear the community's questions and concerns and see what we can work through jointly to solve the traffic calming and public safety issues on those two streets and the adjacent cul-de-sacs that feed in.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Anyone else have anything on the budget? Unless our clerk has come back from her anniversary to read public comment, I'm going to present we don't have any comment on these items. Is there anything else to say about the budget? Mr. Shields, it looks like there's a City Manager's report here. Are you doing a City Manager's report tonight? Well, could I just, just to sum up, because, so we will then take this as council guidance to prepare the budget documents for action based on this markup. The other point about having a council action to direct the unfreezing of the other 400,000, is that something the council would like to place on the agenda as well? I think we had two that would support that. Is that the general consensus of the council? Or should we sort of take it one step at a time and have that be an action that would follow perhaps, you know, within a reasonable timeframe, but maybe a couple of weeks later?
If I may recommend, another option for consideration would be to consider that as part of the budget amendments that would be coming in the first week of June to council for the current year's funding.
This is Dan.
Yes, that's right.
This last piece with regard to moving projects in and out seems to be more the nature of director policy, so I think it needs to stand out by itself. I would be extremely reluctant to just bundle up in a budget for the coming year. I think it needs to be discussed more thoroughly and the implementations and whatever the limitations are, and what are the other trade-offs if, you know, things don't turn out the way that optimistic City Council members would expect, you know, once you spend the 400, 400's spent. So I'd be in favor of a downstream discussion about spending in general with regard to rate and the metering and the implications. Thanks very much.
Sure. This is Dave Tarter. I was just kicked off the call. I don't know who did that. I'm looking at you, Karen, but I'm back, so I missed maybe just a moment of conversation. It sounds like we were talking about the 400,000 and whether that should be allocated now. Is that right? Did I miss that conversation just a bit?
That's correct. And just to summarize it really quickly, Ms. Bawa suggested that that be taken up by the City Council in June, when we take up an FY '20 budget amendment to wrap up this fiscal year. Mr. Z expressed the view that we should not act on that 400,000 this coming Monday, but have it downstream, as he put it.
I would, if I could just weigh in, I would agree with Mr. Z. I understand the need and desire to get traffic calming done. I've been an advocate for this for years, but I do have some trepidation as to what might be ahead of us as far as the economy goes. And I think waiting a month to have some additional conversations, we might have some more numbers about sales tax and meals tax and the like, would be prudent. It doesn't sound like we could spend all of it anyway in the coming weeks, and so I guess I would be in favor as well as waiting until June to have a more informed conversation.
I would agree with Mr. Tarter and Mr. Z.
Karen, when is the date that we extended tax payments due? So when's the earliest indication of whether people are paying taxes?
So the local taxes are, extension is given till June 1st, and the real estate is due on July 6th.
So what date would be realistic, kind of, to get an update on the financial picture?
We will bring to you budget amendments for this current fiscal year in June. I cannot promise a date right now, but as soon as we have, are able to analyze the June 1st data, we have started getting March numbers, but we don't have all 100% of businesses obviously paying quite yet. So it's still too early, but early part of June or at the very latest, mid-June, because we need two hearings for ordinance, so that it's adopted prior to June 29th.
So this is Dave Snyder, a couple of questions. First of all, I'd like to continue with the 400,000. So let me ask you this, Madam CFO, we know that business taxes are going to be down. The only issue is how much? How much have you sort of lulled off, if you will, to cover contingencies at this point in addition to the 400,000?
That's the ghost of budgets past, colleagues.
Yeah, for whom the bell tolls, Mr. Mayor. I'm afraid it tolls for all of us.
I think so.
So, Mr. Snyder, we are, in addition to getting an assessment of how So Mr. Snyder, we are, in addition to getting an assessment of how our revenues are going to come, we are looking at underspending in all areas. We do have vacancies that will help in some bit to address that revenue shortfall and certain other projects that we could see how the timeline would go and any other discretionary spending. So we are in the process of determining and reviewing the large department, all the contracts that we are in the process of that we need to address by the end of this following month to close the fiscal year. I'm looking at a worst case scenario for the revenues, and I'm looking at a little less than a worst case scenario to come up with an idea of what kind of cuts or underspendings we need to identify to address that shortfall. And I'll be able to substantiate that better once we are past that June 1, and we have some actual data to back up the revenues.
I got a comment.
Sure, Mr. Littenhouse.
Yeah, so I disagree with the majority here. Frankly, traffic calming has been on the agenda for a while. And I find it a bit troubling that out of all the things that we put on the chopping block, we're looking to delay the one related to public safety and the one that our voters have been asking us about the most is the one that we're considering pushing off. We've been spending money on a lot of different things out of the surplus. We've been pushing a lot of money around. We've got a small amount here that we can open up to do some very meaningful things for our community. And we're talking about holding that back. I understand that we're going to have some difficult times ahead of us, but we've got a lot of other places that we can look and sacrificing public safety and sacrificing the one thing that folks have been asking for the most, simply for the sake of being cautious and putting that at the top of the list of things that we hold back, I think is frankly just wrong. I think that we need to move forward with that. I think that we need to unfreeze it. And if we've got to make some tough decisions later on, I think that there are plenty of other places that we can look to, to help, to help mitigate that and to help find those funds. So I, for one, think that it needs to be taken out of the locker. I think it needs people to work. We've got the project and the resources to move forward. And I think we need to do it. So we're going to have some tough pills to swallow, but this is one that frankly, I'm not willing to bend on personally.
All right. Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, so this is Dave Snyder. So I'm interested in learning more, what we can learn and as fast as we can learn it, to see if we can responsibly do what, what Council Member Littenhouse wants to do. Frankly, I would prefer to do it. So I'm interested in knowing why, with as much specificity as possible, we shouldn't do it at this point. And certainly more than willing to consider it next week. But I really want to learn more than I know now about what is the most prudent way to move forward on the projects that we would do with the $400,000. Question isn't moving forward. It isn't disagreeing at all with what Council Member Littenhouse said. But I need to, I want to learn more from the city about why it is we shouldn't do that. Because right now, I've heard some things, but it seems kind of vague and non-specific. So I need to know more than I know now tonight about why we shouldn't do it. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Turner?
Yes.
This is Karen. May I add a little bit more to this before some other comments and questions come up? Even if the NTC projects that are going on with the $400,000, they will continue with the community engagement. The earliest that they need any money to spend is not before end of June. So with keeping that in mind and not delaying any timeline, I'm proposing that we wait till at least the June 1 collections come in, so we have a better idea before determining whether we put a hold or not. And that can be done in any time in June before they actually really need to dip into that money. So that would not put a hold on any project till then.
So Karen, what I'm hearing from you, there's nothing that's shovel-ready until end of June?
Yes. And Ms. Nestor can probably say more on that. But that's the information I've gathered through conversations with her.
Yes, that was exactly what I wanted to supplement from a programmatic area. We are continuing with the community engagement. Great Falls, Little Falls is the biggest one. As I described to Ms. Connelly, we're in that community engagement piece, and we'll need time to finish that out. So while it's designed, until the community approves, it is not shovel-ready. We do have contracts on board and quotes from them, so it would just be a matter of scheduling once funding's approved and the community signs off. We have a small residual amount of money from prior to the $400,000, and we are continuing with that to do some of the signage and the smaller projects. And then if the $400,000 or some part of it is able to be freed up, we take care of Great Falls, Little Falls, and then we go back and be able to follow up with the community discussion that we would have with South Lee, South Oak, and Nolan, for example, on the larger, heavier solutions that they'd asked for in terms of crosswalks, bump outs, speed humps, and sidewalks. Nolan is probably predominantly administrative signage and looking at the sidewalk. So those are, community engagement is continuing. But to reinforce what Ms. Bawa said, we do not need the money until the end of June because we'll keep the community engagement going, giving you time to look at underspending the revenue information that Mr. Shields and Ms. Bawa can bring to council.
Okay. So I think that's important because what I'm hearing is the conclusion is nothing's getting delayed with this decision. And so that should make everyone happy that we can wait till at least first week of June to get more data. Because I think we all want to support traffic calming, but hearing that nothing's actually getting delayed because we want another two weeks of information, that shouldn't really impact projects in the ground. If I can make a request, given that we've pushed so much on, I guess, the concrete and asphalt side of traffic calming, it's really the enforcement. So while we work on getting money to fund all the construction of the projects, I would actually love to see police step up, especially on Broad Street. In the past, I've actually been, made this separate request where we ask that police actually move off Broad Street into the neighborhood streets. But because there's a lot less traffic on Broad, I've gotten several emails now that people have requested more enforcement on Broad Street because it's such a giant straightaway that people can speed 40 or 50 miles down, down Broad. So I think enforcement's equally important as we talk about traffic calming. And that's something that doesn't require new budget funding.
Cindy, do you have a list of those light projects that are being undertaken still? The paint and the signs that you're referring to?
Yes. In the budget questions that we provided, I think it was the May 11, I outlined, and it's a running list, as before, you outlined all the projects at a high level, what we're doing all the streets and the light solutions. If you want more detail than that, you know, we could talk about which specific signs and where we are in the community process.
And so those are going to keep going regardless of whether we let the $400,000 out of the cage or not?
Yes, right now, we have $10,000 to $15,000 that we're able to continue with signage on those other queued projects and work with them on the community engagement for what they might want in light or heavier solutions. Yes, sir. And then Great Falls is a much more robust project that will work the community engagement. From our current estimates for the designs that we mailed to the community is a $230,000 to $240,000 project.
And we have the money for that already allocated?
No, that's the money in the $400,000 that's on hold.
And you're saying that we don't need to spend any of that even if it's worked through the process?
We don't need to spend it towards the end of June because we're still working with the community engagement. So I don't need it immediately. Yes, sir.
Could we get more light projects done if we had more money?
The $400,000 that we had proposed for the FY20 budget incorporated all the items in the queue. And so, yes, we could do more light solutions to heavier like sidewalks if we had the $400,000. Currently, though, we're not delayed because we're still working the community engagement on all the queued projects. The South Lee, South Oaks has an added complexity in that we had applied for state grant money for replacing the South Oak Street Bridge prior to Thomas Jefferson. That's the one that you all know is damaged and is on weight restrictions. That all feeds into sort of the South Oak design. And regrettably, that's put on hold. So we'll still continue the South Lee, South Oak planning. We just don't have that piece. And I will reinforce the point that Ms. Connelly made earlier. We are also still with the $636,000 federal funds. And so we will, in the summer, late summer, fall, be starting to gear up strongly, the community engagement with Greenways Downs. That community has been very active and seems to be organically forming a really nice working group for us to, staff to work with.
Okay. I feel like we have enough light solution projects out there that if we had the money for those, that we could implement those. Is that, is that not correct?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, so again, my, my request stands that we should free that money up and start doing light projects. I mean, again, I want to sound like a broken record, and I will continue to sound like a broken record on this until my dying breath on council. But I feel like these projects aren't moving fast enough, frankly, the light ones. Again, these are things that folks have been requesting. And if it's just a matter of money, I say we release that $400,000 and get some of those going and reprioritize if we need to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
My dying breath on council. Sounds like my line, not Ross's line. Well said. So we've made some progress, it seems. Just talking about this here tonight, we've moved from, I don't know, October as a check-in on this to maybe the end of June. So I'm happy with that progress. I agree with Mr. Snyder. Let's kind of keep talking about it between now and the next time we meet, Tuesday week. And perhaps we get more clarity on the projects that we could, you know, continue working on. I think the, at least my, I can't speak for anybody else, but my concern is this notion that we are freezing something or suspending work on something. And I don't, I don't actually hear that when I hear staff talk about what's going on and what we have the capacity to do. Maybe just a slightly clearer understanding of what we would continue doing and what kind of budget resources that continued effort would eat up until we would, I hope, decide at the end of June. I know these programs are not capital projects. They're pay-as-you-go. But when are we going to vote on the CIP? That's separated from the budget vote, right? When is the CIP vote? June sometime?
May 26, the first reading of the CIP ordinance will be before council. And that'll be influenced by the discussion you're having this evening and your action on the operating budget. And second reading is scheduled for June 22.
Okay. Well, as far as public's concerned, you know, these neighborhood traffic projects look like capital projects. I mean, even the light ones, those signs, once they're up, stay there for decades. Certainly speed humps, bump outs, all that stuff. So I can see a messaging opportunity if we, you know, are able to decide on the CIP and, you know, continued specificity on the neighborhood traffic calming sometime around that time of June 22. I think that, that would be okay with me, I think, as long as, like I say, we're gathering information and mapping out a plan that does not describe anything as being frozen or held up or whatever.
And NTC does reside in the CIP. It's obviously directly impacted on the Pago side from what's in the operating budget to transfer to the CIP.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions or requests?
Yes, this relates to the question.
You just muted yourself, Ms. Hardy.
Sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that prompted, that reminded me of a question I asked last week about traffic calming. Because I don't think people actually care how we fund it, but they want to see it done. And so given that money is quite cheap, and I think I saw the response that for five-year short-term debt, we're at 1 and 1/4% or so, what is our capacity to take on more short-term debt for projects like this? Because I clearly could qualify as kind of a capital project that we could debt finance. And obviously, you know, we're doing fleet vehicle renewals, I recall, Ms. Bawa, with that same kind of short-term debt, right?
That's correct. And we are, as part of the CIP, we are looking at other funds where we need to be paying that require the debt, including the stormwater and sewer, and also the other CIP projects, the caper projects that are in the CIP, that we do not have any local funds for, non-transportation ones. We will be bringing those to you as part of the CIP that we bring next week.
So as we talked about, kind of increasing throughput, because I think the bottom-line concern is that we all want this done. And we want to, even after we make a decision on what to do about the $400,000, after we get more data on how the economy is doing, I think we're probably going to even want more of that. And so in terms of increasing throughput, does it make sense to actually think about using some near-term debt to finance a lot of these, to get more sidewalks done, get a lot more capacity to do these projects? Because I think
Right, right. Sorry, and
Go ahead.
Finish.
I was just going to say, it's not a priority that's going away.
Understood. Along with the funding, other discussion that staff is having to make sure that the, there is capacity to make these projects, implement them in the pace that we're getting the funding for. So all that is being discussed and will unfold to council. We'll bring it as part of the CIP and other meetings that come.
Thank you. Were there other comments, questions, or requests from anyone? Mr. Shields, did you have a report you wanted to give? I see that on the agenda. Maybe it's just from past agendas. But is there any, did you have a report that you wanted to give?
I did. And I'd be happy to give my report. If I could just make one point with respect to the, the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. And it's one that I want to address because in a number of the public comments, the statement was made that, you know, it's not fair that the Neighborhood Traffic Calming was the only project that was cut. And there were some similar comments to that effect tonight. And I just want to remind the council that the budget that you will be acting on next Tuesday is a budget that's $5.4 million less than what was presented on March 9, including a $2 million reduction to the school board request and a $3.4 million reduction in general government spending. So the reality is that with this restoration of funds, the NTC is virtually the only program that I can immediately think of that has not been cut in this budget. And everything else has been. And so there is, I just don't want people to lose sight of the fact that there is a lot of sacrifice and a lot of difficult decisions that went into this budget. And so it is positive that we were able to get funding back for this important council priority. I'll move now to manager's report, and I'll lead off with noting an announcement on an important departure for the city. Mike Whitfield, our Public Works Director, has informed me that he is taking a job in the private sector on the West Coast. And of course, Mr. Whitfield has a lot of years in the private sector. And I think at this phase in his career, he's indicated that he wants to get back to that. And so we will be saying our goodbyes to Mr. Whitfield on June 19. And we'll have an opportunity before then to really celebrate a lot of the progress we've made as a city with him here on our team and his leadership of our Public Works Department. And one of his lasting legacies is a really great team that has been assembled in our Public Works Department that will carry on this important work. So thank you, Mr. Whitfield. And we'll do more before you leave to recognize your service. We will have, obviously, a full recruitment for this. We're in a hiring freeze, but I think this position obviously is too important to leave vacant. But we'll walk through the details of that, and I'll keep the city council informed of our process going forward. The city is in a period of time where we're making probably the most significant investments in a generation in our infrastructure. And so this is obviously just a crucial position for us. just a crucial position for us. A couple other things to note. As I mentioned at an earlier meeting, we have a series of teams that are trying to work to help us, help our business community, and also help us prepare ultimately for the reopening of City Hall and our businesses as we go into Phase 1 reopening, that is presumed to be, if the data supports it, on Friday, May 29th. We're all looking forward to that, but we also want it to be done effectively and safely. And one thing I'll just note is, we are working really hard to try to have some uniformity regionally in how we reopen. And so certain things, like the details of how restaurants will do outdoor seating, how we will stand up more testing, how we will have, you know, more public communication on mask usage, on some of the things we'll try to do when we reopen to stay safe. I think it's helpful for everybody if the rules are generally about the same, and localities all will have a fair amount of reasonable latitude in how we proceed jurisdiction by jurisdiction, but it probably serves the business community better and the public better, to the extent that we can be uniform. We're also working together regionally on our plans for summer camps and big special events over the summer. So more to come on that, but I just wanted to note that we are still working hard on that, and I think we'll be making some progress and trying to get clear information out in the coming days. One last note, I will just say that our recycling center, I noted this last week, but we really have been overwhelmed at our recycling center with the amount of material that's being dropped off there, particularly over the weekends. It's really without precedent. And so we are considering some options to try to rationalize how people access the recycling center and try to avoid the situation where it's basically just turning into a pretty big dump over the weekend, and lots and lots of hours of trying to clean it up on Monday mornings. So more to come on that. What it could be is restricted access, so vehicles can't get into the recycling center over the, over the weekend hours, and we keep the recycling center open really just during the times when we can have more eyes on what's happening there. But we are all concerned about the amount of time that, that staff is spending now in cleaning up the recycling center after the weekend. So more to come on that, but we do ask the public's cooperation with us on that. I think that's all I have to report right now. Be happy to answer any questions.
Let me ask you, Mr. Shields, on the recycling, are you saying that people are dumping, like, trash and things that aren't recycling there, or just excessive amount of recycling?
It's both. And so for the excessive amounts of recycling, one option for us is to increase the amount of, you know, times that the materials are hauled off the site. That does have a cost associated with it. Of course, we're talking about a lot of budget cuts right now, so that's a challenge for us. But the other aspect of it is people just leaving things that don't belong at a recycling center, and that's the more expensive and time-consuming piece of the problem.
And are so, are loads being contaminated such that they're not being able to be recycled?
Yes, when that happens, that's, that's exactly the consequence.
So is that regularly happening, essentially like a giant load of recycling gets wasted because somebody threw in a bunch of trash, like used it like a trash dumpster or something?
Let me get back with you on an answer to that. I don't want to overstate that, but I know that that is a problem. And the reason staff spends so much time cleaning it is because we want to avoid just that. So we climb into the dumpsters and take out things that don't belong there. That's very time-consuming. But, you know, before I say that we've lost bunches of loads of things that end up going to landfill, let me get my, let me make sure I've got the facts straight on that.
Yeah, that would be really good to know, because if we're losing loads of recycling, I mean, it's just so much effort to clean your recycling and go through all this hoopla, and then if it all ends up in the landfill, it's just, it's kind of disheartening. But I think we all would like to know the true facts, what's going there. Do we have video cameras there or anything?
We do have camera surveillance, and it's a difficult thing to enforce. I mean, even when we do get license plates and things like that, and I hate to say it on camera here tonight, but it's a tough thing for the police department to follow up on, on those types of complaints. We're having that discussion as well. But really, what we, what we need is just a more orderly setup, so that, that temptation isn't there just to leave a big disordered problem behind.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions, either from Mr. Shields or just in general?
I do have several comments, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor Connolly.
One is related to testing, and I've asked, Mr. Shields and I have talked about this several times, and I think we need to really try to get a testing site in Falls Church or get people in Falls Church access to testing for COVID if they need it. And I did some research this weekend, and I just want to share with people that the Colmore Clinic, which is a free clinic to people who have no insurance, is based just outside the City Falls Church at the First Christian Church, which is just past Sears, and that is available to people in the community who would like, who think they may need to be tested because of contact with someone with COVID or symptoms that they may be having, or that they're in a high-risk group. So there's a number to call, and I'll share that with Nancy Vincent to make sure that it's accessible to everyone in the city. But I think that's a really good resource. And I've asked Mr. Shields to take a look, to talk to Fairfax Health Department, and see if there is a way that, as they're setting up clinics in localities, we could get one in the City of Falls Church as well. The second thing is, Ms. Hardy mentioned that it might be a good idea if we were, could purchase masks for people in the community and for staff and others. And I just want to put it out there for those who would be doing the purchasing. The Chamber of Commerce is having some masks printed with the "Live Local Falls Church" logo on them. So if, and I don't know how all procurement works, but if the city is purchasing masks, would you check with the Chamber of Commerce to see if you can purchase the masks that they've bought that have a Falls Church branded logo on them? And then my last is a scheduling request, and we usually do that at the end. So I can either do that now and wait...
I think we're, I think we're at the end, or hopefully we're at the end. So go for it.
All right. So my scheduling request is this, and this is just related to the employee reviews of the three employees at City Council reviews. So this, I'm asking if this can get onto the schedule somehow. So on June 8th, we'd like to have a council closed session to discuss the annual reviews, and then the week of June 15th, set up meetings to do those annual reviews, and then on June 22nd, we'll vote on that for next year's budget. So could that get on the calendar? And then I ask council members, and those to be reviewed, to just meet the deadlines along the way, so we can hit all those deadlines for the end of the year.
All right. I think you're soft to nag a whole, a few more times.
Oh, I'll nag. Don't you worry.
Thank you. Thank you for organizing and leading that effort as you've done in past years. You did a great job. So thank you, Vice Mayor. Are there other questions or comments from members of council?
Scheduling question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, of course, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you. So the Economic Development Committee normally would have a meeting on Thursday, May 28th at noon. The manager had a conversation with me recently about the business that we might attend to at that meeting regarding the West Falls Church Gateway and the Insight Project. So I don't know if Wyatt wants to say anymore about that, but we sort of need to officially decide to do that meeting so that we can get the computer wheels turning to make sure it happens. Wyatt, do you have anything?
Well, I will just say that on behalf of the city clerk, she does like us to plan as far ahead as possible. So as Mr. Duncan noted, I think there are things that would be useful to have a discussion with the EDC on, related to some current projects. And so that, that's the discussion that we have.
Okay, so I exchanged emails today. Not only do they need time, but they need specificity. I'm told that the city attorney needs to know what the agenda items are to make sure they pass muster, and the two that I mentioned passed muster as items that we could discuss. So that's sort of where I'm going with it. The only other thought I would have is, is the EDC going to talk about any of the reopening issues that you discussed, if we're meeting on the 28th. I presume that things will already be in place for whatever we're hopefully going to do on the 29th, but a third agenda item in addition to Gateway and Insight could be, you know, the reopening question. We're trying to keep the time down pretty tight. We only have like from 12 to 1:30. So I don't want to put too much on it. I would definitely want to do the two projects, because I think those are coming to us with some timestamp on them.
Well, the last conversation that I had with the clerk today was that this would be, she would be working to set this up for the 28th. So we can confirm or change that tomorrow, but I believe that is the plan, to have that meeting with these agenda items and whatever else you all and the manager may agree on. But I'll check with her first thing in the morning, and we'll get something out so everybody knows for sure. But my latest conversation with her was that that meeting would go forward.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions or requests from anyone on council? So again, our thanks to Nancy Vincent and Dana Lewis for joining us. I probably departed the call, but thank you both for your good work. And, and so our clerk, Celeste Heath, if you're watching, happy anniversary once again. But I guess we'll call it a night then, unless there's any last words. Thank you all for your good work, and thanks to city staff and our great police and fire and EMT folks who are doing a great job. So everybody stay safe out there.